... citizen here for our county commissioner, call me. At this time, I would like to share two leaders in prayer. Would you please stand, please?
Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for an opportunity to come out and serve you tonight. Lord, I just pray for your hand to be on everything that's done here tonight. I thank you for the blessings that you've given us in this county. I thank you for dialing across so that we could have a hope and a future. We pray your blessings now. In your name we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to call the meetings in order. This is a notice of a special meeting of the Board of County Commissioners here in Madison County, held today, June 29th, 2011. The time is 6 o'clock here at the Madison County Board Commissioner Meeting Room, Madison County Courthouse annex. The purpose of this meeting is to consider and possible action upon the response from the Army Corps of Engineering regarding the permit application to replace 150 bridge at the Little Arcilla River and allow the construction of a temporary bypass road around such bridge during construction and replacement. At this time, I'd like to call the county engineer, Mr. Stevens.
Okay, as many of you might be aware, we contacted the DOT yesterday, Mr. Jordan Green, who was in charge of all the grant applications that we get. We asked him for a one-year extension on the grant. We were advised last night, or first thing this morning, that they had granted that one year extension. So what's, with your permission, what we would like to do is rapidly proceed to satisfying the Corps, hopefully keeping it within a minor permit. Right now, it looks, I was told by the Corps that it would take somewhere on the order of 60 to 90 days to get a minor permit. If it goes to a standard permit, it could take as much as eight to 10 months. So right now, we're hoping to keep it at the minor permit. It's just going to be one of those things justifying, or how we justify getting that bridge, getting the bypass road. We've got to go through a lot of steps of what we can't do before they tell us that what they've justified it enough. They classify it as a high-quality wetland or improvement. When they have a high-quality wetland, their stance is, don't disturb it at any cost. Now, they did make a suggestion of doing a Bailey Bridge, which would just tear the heck out of the land out there, just putting it up, the empty foundation, very similar to what we're doing at the Grayville Bridge anyway. So right now, we're proceeding with trying to do what we originally planned. It'll be a little more intense construction-wise, because we're going to have to do some drainage couches, size of the pipe according to the drainage couch. We're going to have to harden it. Before, we were just going to have the contractor maintain a dirt road across there. We could probably still have the dirt road, but we're going to have to harden the sides. When I say harden, stabilize it with your saw, riprap, something of that nature, to make sure it doesn't go anywhere if there's a storm event. And then we're going to have to replant everything that we disturbed once the project is complete. If it goes any further than a minor permit or a nationwide permit, we could possibly have to do mitigation, in which case it'll run into many dollars, and then we're going to be back up in front of you all to decide what we do then. But right now, we've got probably somewhere close to 50/50 chance of being able to get a permit. I'm not saying we're going to get a permitted, but we're going to try our best to get a permit. And we've got the time extension to do it.
So it's much better than what it was in anticipation and not even having a bypass to go. So at this present time, with the extension, it will allow us time to offset our bypass.
Yeah, now, I talked to Mr. Cherry today. There is one pier that has already failed. He has asked us to look into being able to stabilize that one pier, just to make sure that the DOT doesn't come in, okay, we're giving you an extension, now we're going to shut the bridge down because it's not safe. The only thing I can tell you is if log trucks keep running over it, which are way over the five-ton limit, who knows what's going to happen to the rest of it? And those guys are keeping a close watch on what happens under that bridge.
Thank you.
So that's where we stand right now.
I appreciate that, and that is good news for us, considering the special meeting. At this time, Stevens?
I've got a question to you.
Sure.
You know, originally, we had not even thought about his bypass.
Right.
It just came up, you know, I think the money we've got for the bridge, actually for the road paving, that they're going to allow us to rebuild the bridge.
Right. Well, within the last year, they've changed the regulations for scot and scrap to be able to allow rehab for the bridge.
Rehab for the bridge, so we're using actually that paving money to do this.
Part of.
Part of, yeah, part of. We're going to sell away a little bit of paving.
Anything, yeah, any additional funds we spend are going to just pay.
It's going to take away from that. And do we have, do we have any kind of estimate now if the added cost of this delay and permitting process?
The delay won't cost a whole heck of a lot. There'll be, I would guess, if we have to harden that thing, we may end up spending on that little area, somewhere around 50 to $100,000 on that area, which is going to take off from the other. Every $200,000 we spend, or thereabouts, 215, takes away a mile of roadway that we can resurface. So if we had to put, for example, Bailey Bridge, a Bailey Bridge, it costs you about $500,000 to get it done.
So if they come back and say you've got to add Bailey Bridge, what are we going to do then?
We're going to do a lot less of the overlay.
Either that or not do the bypass.
Or not do the bypass. That would be up to you. But right now...
But that is a consideration we could take right now, is not do the bypass and we're in pursuit of it, correct?
Correct.
But, Mr. Stevens?
If we've decided to do it that way, how many people, we'd already had a plan of where we're going to route these traffic. How big of a detour would it be for, you know?
If you were, if you were on one side of the bridge, and you had to go up to Bailey Grade, cross the 221, down to 140, cross 140, up 150 to the other side of the bridge, that's 12 and a half miles.
North side, how far would that be? If they were on the north side of the...
If they were on the north side of the bridge, it depends on where they got to go.
Well...
I mean, if you're going to Greenville, from the north side of the bridge, rather than going down 150, you go across Bailey Grade and down, you're only talking another mile or two.
But the route, that...
I mean, the only people that it would really hurt to get the maximum amount of the detour would be if you were trying to get from one side of the bridge to immediately on the other side.
Well, I went out there, and as a matter of fact, I went out there with Mr. Roke, and it was at this...
Oh, it is?
22 miles. He said 20, close to 20 miles.
Well, according to...
And not only that, you have a business there, and that business...
It is, that has to be...
Yeah, a lot of concerns.
I'm not, I'm not for not doing it, don't get me wrong. But what I'm saying is, if you go scale the maps, which we have, and you can, you can look at that map right there, you can see real easily that it's only about 12 and a half miles around, around that distance. If you Google it and go, you know, use Google Earth, you go from point to point, the point's about 12 and a half miles.
Now, if we get a right inspector to come back in there now next week, and we've extended this thing, and I already told you that they condemned the bridge, basically, they've condemned the bridge. And make them back in next week and say, the bridge is not going to make it, somebody's going to fall in here, floating. What are we going to do then?
Then you're out, you're...
You're just out, we're getting rid of it.
Now, what we're hoping is, we can go in there, explain the situation, show them that we're trying to shore up that one pier that's not in good order, and that makes satisfying. One of the piers out there has already been shored up by the county years ago. I mean, they've already had one today. But the thing is, every time a log truck goes over that thing, you know, the bets are off, you know? I mean, if we, there's got to be some way to do it, but without having a cop out there every single day, it's not going to, it's not going to happen, you know? I mean, they're still going to use it, we've seen it used in times that we're out there. But that's what really damages you, when you get those heavy, rolling, rolling loads, that's what messes up the bridge. You can stand on the edge of the bridge, right where the asphalt hits, right where the approach hits, and just a dump truck, an empty dump truck going over that bridge, it'll bounce you, and you can feel it. It was substandard at the inspection in 1993. They, if you look at the, where it stands on the list of statewide bridges that are worse than it, there's still, I think Jordan said, there are 23 bridges statewide that would be up before ours got done if we waited for the DOT to handle it, rather than being able to do it the way it's going now. And they figured that timing would be somewhere around 23.
If we start now, we have to do Mr. Cherry's timeframe to you, estimate we can have permitting and everything.
If the guy at the Corps didn't lie to me, he says that he has issued permits, if it stays in a minor, he has issued them in 60 to 90 days. If it goes to standard, the norm is six to eight months. And it depends on the workload, because when you submit it to them, it goes to the bottom of the stack. So what Alan and I have talked about is trying to, once we submit the thing, start getting somebody above their head involved in it, and sit down face-to-face with them and see what we can do to speed up the process. Because, I mean, we're at a point where it's really critical, and something that hadn't been said so far is, what are emergency vehicles going to do? I mean, they've got to go through that same detour and everything else. And nobody's even brought that up, you know? I mean, 12 miles is, that's a life or death.
We have, we have stuff, the emergency vehicles aren't supposed to go across the bridge. If they don't be wet, sure.
They will, but I mean, technically, yeah. And then the Corps is throwing that back in our face, saying, well, you shouldn't have people on that bridge anyway, so why not shut it down?
Who accepts a lot of buildings if that bridge shouldn't work?
They didn't them. Right now, it's your road to your bridge.
We can make it simple.
That's the bad thing about having the loggers going across on the...
I lost some inconditioned folks that haven't been moved on, but that's my...
You know, to me, at least with the extension, you're giving the people out there the benefit of the doubt. I mean, if that don't work, and there was a scenario, the next thing you can do is, you ain't going to have another choice.
The only thing I can suggest is that we just keep you posted, you know, every month or so.
Can you show up that here?
Yeah, we're going to look at that next week.
I want to go ahead and do that. I appreciate you contacting everyone to get our resolution to decide exactly what we can do for that bridge, because like you said, it's the hinders. Either way, they can come and shut the bridge.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it can, you know, you're rolling the dice.
If they shut it down, we're going to have to rush, but I may as well.
Well, the good, the good thing is our rapport, Mr. Cherry's, the county's rapport with the DOT, at least they're trying to work with us. There isn't much they can do as far as helping us with the Corps. Swannie River even, they can't help too much, because they've already permitted it. So I think the next step is probably get our senators and congressmen, or their representatives, involved in it, and see if they can help us work it through the process.
I think Mr. Cherry did contact Representative Denver.
I contacted Senator Nelson's office and, excuse me, Andrew Crenshaw's office. They both said they would help us expedite it.
And then we spoke with him today, Representative Peter, who lives in Greenville, Denver.
Does the Army Corps of Engineers, they get involved in all bridge work, or is this...
Only when it's orders of national waters. In other words, if it's like a, they don't get involved in lakes or anything to do with lakes, they get the moving water, rivers and streams that they're cricket carries. They didn't even used to get involved in anything navigable waters, you know? That really isn't navigable water. The problem is, when they get involved, they start notifying agencies about the project. Swannie River only has to notify them. That's how they got involved originally. Once they get involved, then you're going to get wild Florida wildlife, and it's not the local guys we deal with, it's the people out of Jacksonville. If it goes to a standard permit, we'll have to do archaeological permitting. I mean, there's about 10 different individuals that have no timeframes as far as response. So it's, you know, you're just sitting there waiting for them to respond. That's what usually takes a little time. Now, he looked at it last week, the poor guy did last week, said that our wetland lines, as we showed them, were okay, other than saying that it was a high-quality wetlands, which I find that hard to believe. There's already a concrete pad at the bottom of where people used to use it, or Cry County uses it anyway, so. All righty. So your blessing, we're going to go ahead and proceed that way.
At this time, if we have any person that's in the audience that it affect the bridge, I'll give you a minute or so to come up if you'd like to say something, Mr. Roke.
Thank you, Madam Chair and board. What I was on board back in the nineties, when this discussion came up several times, and I guess we got to go for that government red tape. I've got a couple of questions for Mr. Stevens.
Right here.
Okay. Once the permit is approved, and they say you can repair the bridge, how long are we talking about?
Five months. We've given the contractor right now five months. Now, we have the option to give them an incentive to finish it earlier, and we've discussed that a little bit with Mr. Cherry, but that'll be up to what the DOT will allow us to use as an incentive bonus to get it done earlier.
Okay. I've traveled that road three and four times a day sometimes. When we talk about bypass, or we talk about Bailey Grade and Flowers Road together, how we manage?
At one time, Mr. Brooks had volunteered to get us a ride away from there.
What we're talking about, bypass, when we say bypass, we're going to make it just for strictly local traffic. We're making the turns in sharp enough that a truck could not get around the turns. We're going to come off of the grade right before the bridge, heading southbound, veer off to the left, there's a power line easement that goes right through there. Right. We're going to go right down that easement, back up through Mr. Cassidy's gate, right there by that big pine tree, and out into the road. So when I say bypass, now, it's right, right around the road.
Right at the bridge?
Yeah.
Okay.
The detour is what goes around, and we will have that posted, there will be a detour posted for trucks and whatnot that are going to Greenville or whatever.
Okay. All right, good. Thank you.
Do I have anyone else that has concerns that issue, that that roadway become a progress step to make?
I'm Marshall Norris, and we have a business, we have a business license anyway, so I guess it's still a business. You're talking about not doing the bypass around there, we can't carry the fire trucks around that, I'm part of the fire department, we go for the weight there. And we can get our bypass built pretty quick. There's houses right there at the bridge that we can easily get to, but Greenville has come around and does that. So where you can build a bypass, the better the people be. So it affects all of us. And again, by being ambushed right there just past the bridge, you're talking about a few 30 minutes before you can get there.
Yeah, yeah.
And they're trying to work moving as fast as possible due to the red tape, government and brand, and...
But there's one business out of size, just the two, I love this business out there, there's farmers out there, this business being too.
A second.
So it affects a lot of people.
Appreciate you, Marshall.
Thank you. Other than the board, if you have any other discussions that you, comments you'd like to make?
I feel like we'll have to let Mr. Stevens, you know, try to explore all the possibilities before we just shut it down.
We have a motion by community commissioners to proceed with Engineer Stevens to go on with the procedures with the bypass. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Do you have a second by Mr. Roke? Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, bye-bye. The purpose, the second purpose of this meeting is to consider a possible amendment to present interlocal agreement between the county, the town of Greenville, the town of Lee, and the city of Madison, to allow portion of the proceeds of small county surtax to be expended for insulin care within the county. At this time, it was placed on the special meeting by Commissioner Ellis. I will turn it over to Commissioner Ellis.
Look, that's... Well, I can do it. I can do it also. Okay. This is something that, due to the hospital, engine care is one of the biggest expenses that's hurt in the hospital, and the Lieutenant Cherry and Tim, we've explored every opportunity to help with engine care in the way we could, but to include a possible tax of any kind. We came up with, we have local option surtax been in effect probably for 20 years.
Since, uh, 1990?
I don't know, 20 years, over 20 years. It's been used for several things in the past. Last, right now, it pays for, half of it pays for inmates. The other portion right now is paying for sure to order that we did free common development to interchange. And we have one, one portion of that always paid down, and by paying this down, we could use a fraction of that half a cent to help with engine care. Engine care be paid on invoice for engine care. Right now, we pay X amount of dollars, I think, $35,000 for engine care. Some of it goes to this hospital, some of it could go to the Tallahassee community or one of those hospitals. Any resident of Madison County that's considered engine, they go to this hospital or another hospital, that hospital has the right to build a county for service. What I'd like to see is to allow us $250,000 of engine care paid to Madison County Hospital, strip foreign engine care paid on invoice on monthly basis. I'll probably let clerk explain how we go about financing this without really involving change in any tax or anything we're doing right now.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
A bunch of copies I'd like to share with everybody, if you'd like to follow along with me. If I may, I'd like to explain the analysis, one we did for the county one cent surtax. Did anybody hear me?
No. Not very well.
Y'all need to count out.
How's that?
Yeah, that's good.
Better?
As Commissioner Spella said, we've had this local option surtax since the early 90s that's been used, originally passed to build jail and to pay off landfill closure. Field closure, received a grant from the state to pay that off, therefore the change to the end from, to the jail and emergency medical services. And we brought along to the mid-2000s, and the change to infrastructure at I-10 and emergency medical services. We have a projected revenue, in the first call, 2010, 2011, that's the current figure of the county, we have a projected revenue from this one cent tax, that's a sixth cent that citizens pay in Madison County of $945,550. Presently, we have two loans to pay off the infrastructure. In 2004, 2005, the board wished to help with economic development and ask by a local agreement, along with the town of Lee, Greenville, city of Madison, and Madison County, direct those funds for infrastructure at I-10, that's a sewer and water. At 253, 53, and 221, there are two loans, one was to the Bank of America for around $1.8 million, I believe, and DEP loan, Department of Environmental Protection, close to $4 million. The Bank of America loan was about $440,000 a year. The DEP loan is $235,000 a year. One of the scenarios we looked at was, next year, the Bank of America loan, final payment is next year, next May, will be approximately $420,000. If we can refinance that loan, we just use a 4%, that could be less. If we went through this scenario, we could certainly put this out for bid for the lending institutions in Madison County, that could be less. But this is using a 4%, it's almost $119,000 a year for the next four years to pay off the $400,000 debt. That would free up $250,000 in insulin care in Madison County for hospital, business and people that enter the doors of Madison County Memorial Hospital. In 2011, 2012, when we begin this refinancing, that would still leave funds available for EMS around $345,000. Another scenario, if you turn the page. Still looking at 2010, 2011, same projected revenue of $945,550. Again, the Bank of America loan in blue, $440,000, paid in May. The DEP loan, $235,622. In this scenario, we'd be using available funds in the county reserves, mainly from the fiscal constrained reserve. These are dollars that we receive from legislature each year, almost $700,000, and they're meant to do things that we normally would not be able to do as a fiscal constrained county. If you look in the revenue under 2010, 2011, at a figure of $41,667. the Bank of America has the lowest interest rate at two point four five percent. Again, the expense would be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the engineered care. We followed through with our other loan payment of two thirty-five, funds available, uh, remaining with over two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. Next year, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, projected revenue of nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we expect these to grow, hopefully as the economy improves, these dollars will improve. That would be the only revenue for two thousand twelve, thirteen. And the expenses, we've paid off the Bank of America loan, so we don't have to do that. What we will go back as expense is payback of fiscal constrained fund. Remember, we borrowed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, plus the forty-one thousand dollars, so we have debt to fiscal constrained of over two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. If we split that into payments, and paying that money back at the rate that we invest those dollars in the state board administration, currently, uh, we have a investment rate, an interest rate of point three percent, uh, we would pay whatever that rate would be over the year back to fiscal constrained, we estimate, using the point three percent, the first payment back would be a hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. Uh, one cent surtax, if we go toward the benefit, uh, the hospital for engineered care, two hundred and fifty thousand, we again have the payment to the DEP loan, two thirty-five, remaining is three hundred and seventeen thousand. The next year, we, we follow and pay back the fiscal constrained loan in full, another hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. And again, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for engineered care goes on, uh, two thousand fourteen, fifteen, uh, we're not paying back any loan, monies would go strictly to engineered care and to the other DEP loan for infrastructure, two thirty-five. So, looking at these two scenarios, uh, analysis number two, using the funds available to the county, uh, there'd be a savings of almost fifty thousand dollars in rather than going the conventional, the ending route. I'd like, also, let the board know that two thousand ten, eleven, uh, we should have a balance at the end of the fiscal year of around six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in fiscal constrained, in two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, with the added expenses of the, uh, fiscal constrained, uh, and the other commitments we made, we'll still have over six hundred thousand dollars at the end of that fiscal year. Are there any questions from the board?
Uh, I have a question for you. Uh, by stretching out our infrastructure loan, how much more interest will we have to pay?
If we use the number two, analysis number two, you're probably on about, uh, two hundred and ninety-one thousand at point three percent, we're probably less than two thousand dollars in that question.
We have a question, and she talked about engineered care. Um, it's a difference between the engineered care and bad debt. And with the checks that the county signed for engineered care, it doesn't come up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Where did they get that figure from to, to borrow, to give the two hundred and fifty thousand? Where did that come from?
I'll have to supply that to the hospital. It's a, uh, the number that was mentioned, and, uh, we use that dollar figure from, uh, Mr. Abercrombie at, uh, immediately.
Mr. Abercrombie?
This is Patrick, I have field, our CFO as well. Um, we have about three million dollars on...
One second, Mr. Abercrombie. The question is, the engine, engineered care, the bad debt.
I'm getting there.
Okay.
We have about three million dollars a year in uncompensated care. That takes up a several categories such as charity and such things as that. Charity work required by law, provide and so on, and bad debt is in that number as well. About two million dollars a year is like engineered care, going to meet the criteria that the county has for engineered care.
From the figures that I receive, we don't allocate too many dollars into engineered care. How much is the county giving to you now for engineered care?
About thirty-five thousand a year.
So, if you want to go from thirty thousand to two hundred and fifty million?
Right, because we deliver about two million in engineered care.
Only and not bad debt?
Only and not bad debt.
Maybe you need to explain, uh, engineered care, when someone is engineered, they have a process that they have to go through in order to be considered engineered care. That's where that's your hospital or another hospital?
That's exactly right. Every hospital in the country has criteria that, uh, that when a patient, uh, meets those criteria, they would be classified as an engineered patient. So, that's the type of patient we're talking about. And the thirty-five thousand dollars that the state now made, if you receive right now through the county, those meet that criteria. We're not asking that definition change at all.
So, the two hundred and, two hundred and fifty thousand, that's what you're requesting from, from us, the two hundred and fifty thousand?
We're requesting that the condition, concern of, uh, uh, paying the care for those engineered patients. That's correct.
It's right, can you?
Right.
The, the, the engineered care, the two million dollars, is that actual cost or is that?
Uh, no, that's not actual cost, uh, that's, uh, that's charges.
Charges.
Right. No, it, it makes up of several different categories, uh, actually, engineered care does not make up several different categories, this one, it'd be actual cost.
That is actually what he asked about.
I'm sorry, my mistake. I'm getting tangled up with what we're talking about here. No, it's the charges, and that equals two million dollars.
Okay. If the state approved this newest grant request that was mentioned in the green publication, um, how do we spend on that?
Could you repeat that question?
If the state has approved their newest grant request to you, then that was mentioned at green publication.
I don't know what you're referring to.
You have it. USDA still feels old and new hospitals are still, the old house, the hospital that you're in now, do they still feel that it's financially viable?
Oh, okay, uh, we're, we're not talking about grants here, we're talking about a loan, it's a twenty-two and a half million dollar loan to build a new hospital. But I can't speak for the...
No, I'm talking about your hospital now, not for the USDA, but the twenty-two million. Uh, is that hospital still at this time?
The building, the fiscal structure?
The money, finance.
Uh, we, uh, we like every other business pretty much, in Madison County, we struggle. We struggle harder, and that's another reason for the county to consider this, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, the hospital has been carrying the, uh, the burden of the engineered care pretty much by itself for years, and, uh, that's not, um, it's not, it's not morally right, and it threatens actually to, uh, threatens the hospital. So, this is a way whereby that, uh, that burden can be, uh, spread out over the county as opposed to just one organization carrying it for the entire county.
How's the engineered care determined, how's it different from the bad debt?
Now, I want to turn that over to Patrick to explain the specifics, but, uh, bad debt, uh, is, um, is anyone, whether they have funds or not, that don't pay, that doesn't pay their bill on a certain length of time, such as a hundred and twenty days, that would turn into bad debt. That's not engineered care. Engineered care, uh, they meet certain criteria. Patrick, can you speak to that?
Uh, they do, I, I don't know the particular criterias, or maybe speaking of this, and that you... Sorry, I, I don't know the, the actual typical criteria. We have, uh, insurance aid, uh, people in our office, that they, when a patient comes in, it needs to be seen, and what we start doing, the financial workup or whatever, they'll come over, sit down, and go through, I think, the two, three days application. And once it's approved, they return that invoice over to the county, and that's what's considered engineered care. Bad debt, like David said, it's, he won't pay the bill.
Right, and with the engineered care too, it has to do with even amount of money that a person makes, the number of people in the family, such things as that. There's actually a, a state definition that defines engineered care, it's not our definition.
I, I would like to, that's the board actually, but the last time you met with the board and you requested the one million dollar, and it was on bracket, and the question that was asked to you was like, when you get this one million dollars, you will be set that you'll be able to move on with the hospital, that would put you on top. What happened?
Well, the answer I gave to the question was no, it wouldn't.
No, I have, I, I pulled it, you said that that was always like, I think, Mr., um...
I, I would have to hear that, I, I don't recall.
I got a question for, uh, I guess, either Mr. Cherry or Mr. Sanders, bottom line down for funds available for EMS, um, you looked at your first analysis.
Yes, sir.
Goes from two twenty-eight to three forty-five, and on a second, you go to two sixty-nine, two ninety-four, and the reason for the increase is for adding another ambulance, is that correct?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Can you explain that to me? Uh, fiscal year two thousand ten, eleven, how it increases, uh, going into two thousand eleven, two thousand eleven?
We just have less expenditure from the nine hundred, uh, revenue of nine forty-five, five fifty, and then we subtract the four hundred and forty thousand, forty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-five, which is two hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Uh, next fiscal year, beginning October one, we estimate nine hundred and fifty thousand revenues, which is conservative, um, we are converting, uh, four hundred thousand to a hundred and nineteen thousand, we subtract, a hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand, two thirty-five thousand, nine fifty, three, three forty-five, come out as a square. Likewise, one time on...
Mr. Victor?
Uh, yeah, I got a couple things, and I guess the first one is, my understanding that this meeting is to discuss it, not to make a decision over the day. Um, I guess I'm gonna back up to the, um, infrastructure. When we first started talking about infrastructure, we were talking about going to fifty-three, two fifty-five, two twenty-one, and fourteen, and we knew that we were fourteen. And what I would like to see is maybe get some prices on what it would take to run infrastructure fourteen, since that's what the money was supposed to be for, before I made the decision on this. I ain't saying that this is a bad, this is a bad idea, but I guess this is the way that kind of everybody would think, you know, and I know county staff probably worked hard on this than they did anything else, but I would like to see that. Uh, and, Miss, eventually, my answer, one other question I had is, how did you come up with the two hundred and fifty thousand? But I guess when you look back at it, if that's how much money the clerk and Mr. Cherry and everybody found out we had, that's how you came up with that amount. If God had came up with a hundred thousand, it would've been a hundred thousand, fifty thousand or whatever, but that's just kind of how you came up with that amount. But I would like to see what would it cost to run infrastructure fourteen, uh, that's what the money was intended for. If I could get a dollar figure on that and see what it would take, then I'll let you back at it.
We have a part of it, we have a contributor.
Yeah, we got a company with us, Kevin, and we also, we got a company, and I think, Ellen, you give all the money. Uh, and one other thing that I did mention, you know, I guess from time to time, we have contributed money to the hospital, and I think it was needed. And it was like a one, two-time thing, and if we dug, if we do this with two hundred and fifty thousand empty from now on, and that's definitely be taxed, failed dollars, I still would like to see the hospital come up under the public record. That's how I feel. That's all I got.
Mr. Victor, Victor says, or what you said about the other hospital contributing board, they do not have two boards. They only have one board. The ones that we monitored and went around, uh, Madison County, the hospital has two boards. Uh, the other thing is, how long will you continue to get the two hundred and fifty thousand?
Well, as I said, we, uh, we provide about two million dollars a year or so, I would assume that we would, uh, uh, continue as, as, as long as we have such a heavy burden to shoulder.
The, this meeting is to pretty much, uh, talk about engineered care and hospital finance. It's not about jobs or whatever at the hospital, we're talking about finance. I'm willing to open it up to the public, but those are the areas we are talking about, hospital finance and engineered care. Mr. Ellis?
Yeah, well, I think if you look at this, you know, uh, what we're talking about is, is, is engineered care for the citizens of Madison County, we're the owners of the county. The state of Florida is the smallest hospital that doesn't contribute something to engineered care. Even if we do the two fifty, we're still gonna be less than any other county with a small hospital that, that does not, that, that helps with engineered care for that time. To me, this is just, this is, not, not about the way we build hospitals, or don't build hospitals, it's, uh, something that I think the community needs to do. They need to step up and pay their portion of engineered care. We're gonna pay it one way or the other. You, you gonna pay it upfront like this to help out, or are you gonna pay it to ambulance service to run it up and down the river?
That's essentially it, no doubt, sir.
That, that, that's all there is to it.
And the taxpayer, taxpayers need to know about it too, and to consider it, and not only just to consider it with information on financial statements, tax returns, they need clarity, they need to have an understanding because that's their money. As I said before, we're gonna have three meetings, this is the first meeting, and it's only a discussion. Two other meetings, uh, will be put on our agenda for the nine o'clock meeting and the four o'clock meeting, before the board make a decision, because at this time, they're collecting data and collecting in, information to make a sound decision for the citizens, not just selective citizens, not just for, um, the ones that... How many people here is actually employed by the hospital? Could you raise your hand? If you're employed by the hospital?
Six. What difference does that make?
Attorney's court members?
I did, excuse me, that's out of order, I was just asking a question. Thank you. At this time, um, I would open it up to the public, you had less than a minute. Yes, sir. Can you come up to the podium, say, today?
I'd just like to ask, straight up, I'll crawl in, just for a second, question. Uh, we gave up a, uh, figure to the board of approximately two million dollars for the, uh, cost of the bill.
Correct.
hospitals, it's, uh, something that I think the community needs to do. They need to step up and pay their portion of engine of care. We're gonna pay it one way or the other. You, you gonna pay it upfront like this to help out, or are you gonna pay it to the ambulance service to run it up and down the river?
That's essentially it, no doubt, sir.
That, that, that's all there is to it.
And the taxpayer, taxpayers need to know about it too, and to consider it. And not only just to consider it with information on financial statements, tax returns, they need clarity. They need to have an understanding because that's their money. As I said before, we're gonna have three meetings. This is the first meeting, and it's only a discussion. Two other meetings, um, will be put on our agenda for the nine o'clock meeting and the four o'clock meeting, before the board make a decision. Because at this time, they're collecting data and collecting in, information to make a sound decision for the citizens, not just selective citizens, not just for, um, the ones that... How many people here is actually employed by the hospital? Could you raise your hand? If you're employed by the hospital?
Six. What difference does that make? Attorney's board members?
I'm just asking, I did, excuse me, that's out of order. I was just asking a question. Thank you. At this time, um, I would open it up to the public. You had less than, um, a minute. Yes, sir. Can you come up to the podium, say, today?
I'd just like to ask, straight up, I'll crawl in, just for a second, question. Uh, we gave a, a figure to the board of approximately $2 million in, in, cost of the bill.
Correct.
And I was surprised nobody asked, what is the actual cost? I deal in approximately, do you? I'd like to know where that figure goes. Is that like, one million, 560,000, or is that 2 million 10? Uh, I know that's a hard question to answer tonight, and I'm not asking you to do that, but I would like to see this board presented with some kind of document telling you what the actual cost of engine of care is, so they know what kind of problem they're looking at.
And I understand, sure do. Thank you. Um, that is, uh, something called the cost accounting. And, uh, we have a, a basic problem, or have had a basic problem over at the hospital. The hospital had been operating 1983 IT system, the oldest IT system in the country in the hospital. April 1 passed, a new IT system had begun installation, it'll be complete in about December or so. At that time, we could probably do a lot better job at, at quantifying, uh, some of these questions. Uh, but right now, that question is really impossible to answer, but I think we could probably give you a, a really good, pretty much straightforward, uh, number, if you can at least, uh, have in your hand until such time. Um, would you care to venture in there, Mr.?
Uh, it depends on the procedures and, like, you know, all that nature, but, uh, yeah, you're looking for some, uh, seventy-five to eighty percent cost.
Would you like us to proceed?
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Uh, question. Mr. Vickers, you were a liaison for the hospital. I had turned it over to Mr. Ellis, because that's what was posted there. And Ellis had got with Mr. Sanders about film. Can you give us some type of update on how you feel about what's going on here now?
I feel like, I feel like a cannon shooter. You get a goal toward engine of care.
I agree.
And it's $35,000, because that's one procedure. And on the procedure, that, that would eat at $35,000. I, I don't have a hospital, I don't have any hospital who can operate on that little bit of money.
So, yeah, if it's worth the 250,000 to continue, so...
If you're gonna go ahead, go around and ask us what we think about, may as well vote on it.
We're not gonna, we're gonna have two other discussions.
We, we don't have to. Now, this was advertised for, for discussion, right?
Right.
Uh, I can make a motion right now, if you'd like. And we can pass this right now.
That it was supposed to be, what, um, Mr. Clerk, I am for discussion only, am I correct?
Um, Mr. Perry, if you ask me to post this for six o'clock at night regarding the, uh, the question that's before, uh, after it was posted, and you told me that you wanted this for discussion only after it was posted, but it was posted on the public and to Madison Voice and Green Publishing Madison, discussion possible after.
That's, discussion, because we wanted more people involved with it, we want to have more meetings, and we want to have more people knowledgeable exactly what's going on with that. Yes, sir. Me? No.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, with a minute, I gotta keep it short. Uh, the question had, we're already giving 35,000 to the hospital, but the 250 be additional to that. Uh, second question is, we mentioned that that 35,000 split amongst every hospital in this area. My question is, if we do pass the 250, how much of the town has to be more of Thomasville, Valdosta, La Bosa, Perry? Uh, if we do the 250,000 dollars, uh, we do have engine of care in this county, it's called Medicaid, and it's called Health Department. Citizens are able to see, receive medical care without this. Uh, concerned about the open books. Uh, we were promised that both boards would have open books. They received two loans for $25,000 each, and when asked where these loans generated from, they refused to answer, saying that board is private. We don't have to answer where we get our loans from. Despite being in front of interest, I'm not sure how that is gonna pay out, pay out there. Uh, then we get into the overall financial feasibility of the hospital. It's bleeding money. It's been bleeding money. They keep coming back more tax money. Somewhere, it's time to let the boat sink. You can't just keep pouring money into a sinking boat. I'm not against the hospital, despite what some people think about. I'm just against flushing millions of dollars down the commode in a hospital that's gonna go broke. And when a elected official told me his goal is to get the hospital built, if it goes bankrupt, they will turn it over to the feds, and let the feds do a fire sale. Uh, that concerns me, because there's no long-term plan of how to keep it going once it is built. These questions need to be addressed and answered. Uh, open books have to be addressed, where they're getting their money from. That's all I'm gonna say. I'll keep it short.
Appreciate it. Mr. Gray?
Hello. I just want to clarify, of these two possibilities, the second one looks less expensive, is that correct?
Definitely.
And to repeat the question from, uh, you please, as to how you are concerned about the cost, I didn't really understand, and I'm sure you do want even the least capable accountant here, I'm, that's, I'm misusing the term, check writer for the family is more accurate, to understand the concern of the cost, because when you use these, uh, initials, they don't mean anything to me. So your question about the cost and how to arrive at the cost is what I'd really like to know.
Okay. And what I was, what I was speaking about was, uh, running infrastructure out 14, uh, this money when we ran infrastructure, we left out 14. I wanted to get a cost, what would the cost to run infrastructure out on, I would 14, before I made a decision on using this money for engine of care.
So the preference would be to do infrastructure out 14, rather than help the indigent cost at the hospital?
No, no. I would like to see what the cost would be, the dollar figure would be to run it out there. Now, I ain't saying that I'd rather do 14 than not do engine of care, because really, if we took the money out of the first page to do, uh, to do, uh, out of the second page to do engine of care, we really could still run infrastructure out of the first page out of 14, you know? But I just wanted to cause to know how much it would cost to do it.
So that has a bearing on, mainly, I like to know from the commissioners, how many people support paying for the indigent care that we are obligated to pay by federal law? Can I have a statement of interest? Because I'm getting a lot of questions, and, uh, it seems to me a resistance that is not encouraging. So I'd really like to see what kind of support we've got from the commission to meet our obligation, because as I've said to people coming in here, this is not only a, a financial obligation, it's a moral obligation. And not taking action and waiting to give more and more information when we're finally going to arrive at the same conclusion, I hope, that we're not gonna let our hospital bleed red ink, because we do have a moral and a financial obligation. So I'll be very interested in what it takes to satisfy your concern.
Okay. One second. Let's think what we've got somewhere for that. One second.
I just wanna clear up one thing about the notices. Nobody sent me any notices. I even came up here to get a notice, and they didn't have one, but Ellen's office for me. Both my notices came because a concerned citizen warned me there was meetings that weren't being announced. I went out here to the board and took a picture, out here on the boardroom twice. Nobody ever sent me anything, that's all. It was just Green Publishing that had those notices, not Madison Voice.
I'll be glad to look at that, but, uh, it's absolutely sent to you and to Green Publishing.
I get all my emails, but I never got that.
Yes, ma'am.
Not used to doing this, but I would like to say this.
Just stick your name, please.
My name is Pat Raines. I work for the hospital, and I sit in the office where the people come to make applications for the engine of care. And I know what they have to go through, and seeing with this economy, there's more and more people every day coming in there. And they have to show proof of income, they have to show every person in there, family that's in there, they have to account for everything. So it's not like we're just giving everybody the true care. But every day, there are more and more people coming in that ask for care. And it's not right that y'all don't help. Thank you.
It's not that we do not want to help, it's that we're trying to decide how much money will be allocated for engine of care. Thank you. In the back, please.
I got 9:45. I do appreciate you all, and I love you, because I know that you all have it since. Um, but just really consider, you know, just think about it. I know maybe you can't make the, um, decision right now, but really think about it. And don't allow a hospital to sink, you know? Just think about it. Because we do have some people in there that love you, and I know that you try to do what's right, because you help seniors, and of course, they are part of this.
I think the board has stepped up to the stake three times. Last time with the million dollars, and we do not wanna see it sink either. They wanna see things done fair and accountability and in order. And I don't think y'all want to.
I'm Doug McNichol, president of the Lee Town Council, and, uh, vice president of the Board of Twenty Rivers of the City. I don't come here representing any of those people tonight. I'm just talking for myself and my immediate family. But I would like to recall some things for you, some of you weren't here or somewhere. About 20 years ago, when that one cent sales tax was passed, it was voted on by referendum by the people of the county, and it was promised to be a 15-year deal to pay for the jail and to pay for closing a polluted landfill. And it would sunset at the end of that period in time. We could go back to six cent sales tax. The then-setting Board of County Commissioners, when all that came about, decided not to do that, for rather they would have voted to keep that. We didn't know at the time, when we voted by referendum for it, that it was possible for the county to continue, wherever, which they did. That now becomes the, uh, small county, well, it wasn't, hospital sales tax, and a permanent funding source for you all. Um, my point here is that we broke our word to the public, a vote that the public made. We broke our word to them. Then later, we were asked to pass a referendum for absent sales tax for, to help the hospital get a new building. We didn't. There was a specific list of things that the hospital could do and could not do with that money. And somehow or another, an outset in the Board of County Commissioners figured out a way of hanging around that, and give them a million dollars of that money to do this, what they were told in the referendum they could not do. I don't know whether to applaud you or contest you. Obviously, you didn't want the hospital to go down. That was a method to keep it from happening. Pointing again, you broke your word to the people. It was a referendum that the folks voted on, citizens voted on, not councilmen, not commissioners, not elected representatives, but the actual folks voted. Said, "Don't do that." They don't allow it to be done. Now we're looking at the possibility of amending previously negotiated, um, interlocal agreements. And my knowledge, the only notice that the town of Lee got about this was an email today, um, that this was gonna be discussed. We are actually signatory to do one of those documents. And I feel like we should've had bigger heads up on this thing. And we should not be renegotiating already passed agreements, because you ought to come up with another problem that you need to solve. And I like option two, because it don't involve doing that. Also, it's cheaper. I served on the hospital board for eight years. I'm not, uh, not down on the hospital. I recognize the need to have one. I recognize the need to take care of the engine. I don't think we need to do it by manipulating people. And that's what it appears we're trying to do, once again.
Thank you. This will allow us to specifically, um, dealing with this $250,000 per year, the one cent surtax will not cost an increase in tax. This is not the case. It will not cost an increase in the surplus rate power of the funds allocated and voted on these funds for finance for infrastructures, loan, EMS, and the jail. That's what it was created for. We have created a nightmare. And the reason we have did this is because we are in the business of shuffling our self-assessment funds to projects that's not intended for. As a part of the board and representing the people on the board, we have to make a decision on not to help the hospital. That is not the subject. Each one of us, the best interest of the hospital is in our best interest to do what we can. But be fair with us. Be fair and be honest with us about what you're doing and how you're doing. At this time, board, do you have any other comments?
Madam Chair, before we close, I'd like to...
Excuse, excuse me, one second. Board, do you have any other comments? I'm looking at the comments.
I would just like to know the dates for the other meetings that you're gonna have.
Uh, the first meeting, it was, it would be our regular scheduled meeting, which would be nine o'clock, uh, July, July 6. The second meeting would be a four o'clock meeting, which would be July 16 to 20. And that would be at four o'clock, but, um, we anticipate making it a later meeting at six o'clock on Saturday.
I would like to advise that the attorney of court just pass out what the statute says about engine of care, and the court, we look on that.
We already have that, Mr. Gray.
Okay. Because a lot of engine people voted for you all, for Madison County.
I understand where you're going, this, uh, for another meeting. This meeting was still advertised, uh, as discussion and hospital action. You know, we sat here, we're, we're not talking about trying to save the hospital, we're talking about standing up here with moral issue. This community needs to step up and, and take part in helping with engine of care, whether it be this hospital or whatever. I like option two, that does not, uh, affect this, doesn't cost us hardly anything from where we're at right now. We've got excess money, we can fix this fund, handle this. It does not affect any, any, any property tax whatsoever, uh, probably at least 6% of this local upstate tax comes from the interstate out there. Because we stepped up the plate and used that money right here for the infrastructure, we've created probably at least 200 jobs out there already, plus the added, added rent taxes out there, plus the added taxes. As far as I'm concerned, I'm ready to make a motion. In fact, I'll make a motion that we accept, uh, Alice Number Two. And he was a Philadelmon, Strumming Lane, about $250,000 to the Madison County War Hospital only for this $250,000 for this, uh, engine of care.
Motion. Motion made by Commissioner Ellis, seconded by Commissioner Vickers. Any other discussion?
One thing, Madam Chair, uh, the, the use of these funds is control the interlocal agreement. So what, all you can do today really is instruct us to draft an interlocal, bring that back to you, this board approves it, then it's gonna be circulated to the other boards of the municipalities, so that they can operate on that. And that, that would be the process we have to go through.
That would be the process we have to, have to take. Yes, sir.
Which we'll come back to at least one morning.
Which we'll come back to at least when we need problems.
At least one last one.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, one thing, I like what Doug McNichol said, and looking back at this, it would've been better if the county, the city of Madison, the city of Lee, the city of Green, that since all of us is involved in it, haven't had one joint meeting. And I see a representative here for Green, and I want to leave, and I think it holds forward. But I just want that for the record.
Any other discussion?
It does go right into the, into option two.
Yes, and if they don't accept it, it'll be invisible, except it'll be whatever says that.
Did you take a motion for option two?
And option two does not involve interlocal agreements, is that correct?
Option two involves funds from the sales tax starting in 2012, 2013.
Ah, okay, by virtue of the sales tax generated in those six. Thanks.
Absolutely. Either option. Still have to do it, oh, yeah, I'll have to do that. Did you have, you have the option to accept or oppose?
Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by a. All opposed, sign a. Three passed.
I need one more bit of clarification. Do you want the written interlocal agreement for the meeting on the 6th or the meeting on the 23rd? It would be tough, but I'm gonna do it. Okay, and then, when I'm drafting it, is the, are we doing the 250 plus the already $35,000?
That's mine, that's mine, lady.
Okay. So, I'm drafting it, set the 250 plus the, is it what we already did?
The 35, which will be out over the end of the, this table right here, I want it filled with this from Madison County.